Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonium Watch Pradium, Anti Colorado. The acronym is A-P-A. I am the Chief Judge of a Consular Court. And today, we're going to continue with our same subject matter. And what's the subject matter now? Are you a Moor, of a Moorish state? Or are you a stateless Moor? That's the new subject matter now. Are you a Moor, of a Moorish state? A national, of a Moorish state? A national of a Moorish state? Or are you a stateless Moor? Of the United States? Moors have to start understanding, there's only two classifications now that Moors have to narrow this down to. We can talk about nomads and misnomers every day of the week. Let's simplify exactly the literature and vernacular that Moors need to start to comprehend and use on a day-to-day when we're talking to our fellow Moors. The only way we're going to fix this is to change our literature and change our vernacular. So we must start understanding when we're conversing with other Moors. At some point, we have to ask each other, "Hey, are you a Moorish national of a state? Or are you a stateless Moor?" As a citizen of the United States. When we start to ask each other that question, you'll quickly assess that Moors will want to be on the right side of law. Because as long as Moors are still ipso jor Moor subjects, or Moorish proteges, or Blackamoors, or sovereign citizens, they're what you call outlaws. What am I saying? What you have to understand is, when I say you're an outlaw, it means you're acting outside of the law, the principles of what international law says that you must operate your sovereignty through a state. Yes, your divinity doesn't change. It never changes. Your nationality is your nationality. But when Moors say they want to enforce the law, what are you really saying, Moors? What you're saying is, you want to now perform based upon international law. And international law says you must have a state if you want to enforce your sovereign rights. And through that state, you must have elected officials. And through that state, now you've got your constitution, your seal, and now you get to start to now exercise the right, judicial right, of Consular Court. So now, Moors, now that we're in Class 16, we'll start talking about Consular Court. So what did we learn from Class 15? We started learning that George Washington was teaching us government. Nocturali said he's going to leave the Europeans here long enough to teach us government, to teach us government, and then after that, for us to run government. Well, why did Nocturali say that? Because he knew that the Moors taught the colonists, so therefore now, Moors have to learn from the colonists how to run government again. Because we have to do a reawakening, a restoration, to come back into the competency of understanding a Moorish government. It's what you call a repatriation. We have to now be expatriates of being Negro, Black, and Color, or ipso jor Moor subject, and now come into the nationhood of running state governments. Right? So we can learn a lot from George Washington. What's the most important theme we learned from George Washington? And that is, he was always petitioning a Moorish government in order for him to be able to move forward on any concept they had as a government. He always had to get permission from Sidi Mohamed. What does Sidi Mohamed represent? Moorish government. Sidi Mohamed is just an individual representing a government. No different than any president, or Sultan, or monarch that changes that role. That position is not about the person, it's about the sovereignty that person's sitting in that chair. And that sovereignty is what you call descendable to all of its descendants and beneficiaries. Government is the people. The elected officials have the sovereign ability to now enforce the sovereign rights of the state. But the power's really in the people. The people are really the majesty. The people are really the Sultan. The people are really the queen. The people, as a collective, come together is the true body politic that happens to endorse a head of state. But it's the body that has the true power. Alright? So today, being in Class 16, now we're starting to talk about how do you enforce Consular Court as Moors? Me being the Kazee, I oversee Consular Court. So therefore, what does Moorish governments have to do? You must study law. Everybody is a Kazee. Everybody is a judge. Judge of what? Judge of understanding love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. When you approach everything from a love perspective, truth, peace, and freedom, there's nothing left but justice. All Moors must understand, how do you enforce your rights through justice once you now have tried to determine what's called diplomatic relations with other nations? Once you've tried arbitration to settle the matter, only thing left after that is just justice. But the only way to understand justice, we must now study international law. Alright, so that's what we'll continuously do today. We'll have a slight change in cadence now. We'll start talking about the fact that it's already understood that Moors already understand nationality, check the box. They're now moving towards, they have their constitution, seal, and they now create the state through their inauguration, etc. Now they're moving on to Consular Court. All of these things have created status. The status of what? Statehood. Status of what? Government, like Nocturali tried to impress upon us, to start running government. Once you've put together your state, now you've got your Consular Court, which is one of your three branches of government. What are the three branches of government for Moors? You've got your legislative branch, which is your matriarchal council. That consists of nothing but matriarchs, no males. The matriarchs control the pin, create all the legislation. That will be here. Your matriarchal council. Then you've got your judicial branch, where your judges are. That will be your second branch of government. And then, you've got your executive branch. That's where you've got your Wazir Ares, which is your prime minister, etc., the governor of said government, okay? So these three branches, the mothers control the pin. They control all legislation. And between the mothers, they create the legislation, and the executive branch signs it into law. The Kazee, which is the judge, interprets said law and enforces said law. That's what the judges do, alright? The judge is like the referee on behalf of all your nationals. As well as the judge through Consular Court. Now, when you're dealing with a foreign state or a foreign nation that's created a dispute for your nation, your state, now Consular Court now is used, the power of the court, to protect your sovereignty of your state. We'll talk about that more, okay? So why is all this important? And we start to now build out the understanding of statehood. We must focus in on the mission and the vision statement. What's the mission and vision statement? That we need to fill up Northwest Mexico with Moorish sovereign states. And the only way to do that is to have elections, inaugurations, public inaugurations, create the states, and then start to exercise governmental principles. Same thing Nocturali tried to teach us in 1913. Same thing the international community's been trying to tell us since 1945. It's time now for Moors to get back into governance of Moorish affairs. What is the ultimate goal? To create the United States of Morocco. That is the ultimate goal. So what is the future? The future is the United States of Morocco. That is the obligation of all Moors. That's been our obligation since day one. That was our obligation before Nocturali came on the scene. That was our obligation before Tajri Bay came on the scene. That was our obligation of now understanding how we represent our ancient mothers and fathers. We must start to understand government. So let's keep talking about government principles, okay? But I would ask the question again. How can you run a government if you're stateless? Moors must start understanding, we've moved on. We want to talk about two classifications. Moorish nationals who have a state, or stateless Moors who are still citizens of the United States who cannot use none of these principles as a remedy to assist them. Only Moorish nationals who have a state can use these principles. Period. If you don't understand that, go back and watch the video called "United States vs. Burton Bay." It will show you that the United States of America, through their circuit federal courts, they're saying that Moors are putting on the record documentation as what's called patently frivolous. Why are they saying that? It's because they're telling you a half-truth. The United States of America's telling you a half-truth. They're calling you a sovereign citizen. They're saying you're half-servant, you're half-citizen, you're a Blackamoor. Because why? Because Moors have failed to follow instructions to create the state. You're patently frivolous. That's the truth. What are they talking about? They're talking politics and government. Nocturali said, "Study them, and then run your government." Okay, if you study the United States of America, what do they have in place? They call themselves the states. Where's the Moor states? There yet, let's create the states. Let's create the states. That's the solution. Problem, solution. Let's talk solution. Alright? But like I said, for the record, none of this will work for any Moor. That's stateless. Moors have to come together as a collective. Moors have to get out of their basements. Moors have to now stop just studying videos. Moors have to come together as a collective, put together their government, enforce their Consular Court as remedies. Alright, let's talk. Now, we left off on Part 1, of what we're going to call this, Understanding the International Court of Justice precedent case called France vs. the United States of America. Moors studying at home should already have this document. If you don't have this document already, just research, Google, "United States of America vs. France," or "France vs. United States of America, 1952 ICJ." And you'll see a lot of information pop up, okay? Obviously, I want to save one of the PDFs to get an understanding of the, of what's called the judgment. Because that's what we're looking at, the summary of the judgment. Alright? Okay, so as you recall, in the first series, when we first started reading this document, we left off on the word "nations." Okay, now we won't go back and read this again. You've got to go back and watch the video so you get an understanding of what Part 1 was all about. We're going to pick up on the word "nation." But before we do that, Moors have to now, like I said in the first video, in dealing with this particular precedent of France vs. the United States of America, Moors have to now start to write down notes. What notes am I talking about? When we read the document of France vs. the United States of America, our mindset should be, we're going to use the International Court of Justice precedent of France vs. the United States of America, so that when Moors are enforcing Consular Court through their states, they're using the same principles that the ICJ was taking a look at. And what principles were those? Well, we learned when we had the first class in studying France vs. the United States of America, these are some of the notes. Some of the notes that Moors have to start writing down and go back and do research on these notes. Where did we get these notes from? Let's go back real quick. When we started studying the first couple paragraphs of the judgment, okay? Remember, we went down to the word "nation" now. You go back. Moors need to start taking notes of some of the highlighted themes the ICJ was talking about. So if Moors don't at the very least have these notes written down somewhere, you're not studying. We have to learn how to go back and do research, and use discernment to understand exactly what we're doing. Why? Because when you start using Consular Court, you must have the understanding of, what principles do you use in law? The ICJ is telling you about it. Because France, the United States of America, started putting what they call discovery documents on the table to defend themselves. They started putting treaties on the table to now have an argument of what they call incopatory or exculpatory evidence they're putting on the table. They're putting discovery documents on the table. They're putting exhibits on the table. Each side is disputing. But what are they using? Treaties, conventions, etc., to prove their point, okay? So we must study that, that way we can enforce Consular Court. We're using the ICJ. Remember what I said? We're using it as an exercise to understand this chess game that's going on. It's what you call counterintelligence. Chess is nothing but a counterintelligence game that we're going to study through Consular Court. So therefore, although we're studying ICJ, look at the ICJ as if they're a Consular Court venue. That's exactly what they are. A Consular Court venue dealing with the disputes of other nations. So Moors can learn a lot, okay? So we need to write these notes down, okay? Alright. Okay, so let's get back to the document. So, let's pick it up from where it says "the limits," okay? Keep in mind, you've got to go back and watch Video Number 15 in order to get an understanding of what we read previous to this particular class, okay? So if I can have one of the mothers go ahead and read from the word "the time limits."
The time limits for the deposit of the pleadings were fixed by order of November 22nd, 1950. The memorial of the French government, which was filed on the appointed date, quoted several provisions of the General Act of...
Algeciras.
Algeciras, and drew conclusions therefrom as to the rights of the United States. The construction of a convention to which states other than those concerned in the case were parties being thus in question. Such states were notified in accordance with Article 63, Paragraph 1 of the Statute. For this purpose, notes were addressed on April 6th, 1951, to the governments of Belgium, Spain, Italy, the Netherlands, Portugal, the United Kingdom of Great Britain, and Northern Ireland and Sweden.
Thank you. Alright. So, what did we just read? Let's go back and quickly just assess what just happened, okay? Keep in mind, this is what you call the preface. This is what the ICJ is opening up with, letting everybody know, here are the discovery documents, the storyline that France and the United States of America put on the record. So they're summarizing, because this is their judgment. They're summarizing right now, okay? So what happened? "The time limits for the deposit of the pleadings were fixed by order of November 22nd, 1950." So as you can see, this case started in 1950. The judgment came out in 1952. "The memorial of the French government, which was filed on the appointed date, quoted several provisions of the General Act of Algeciras." Let's stop right there. So right then and there, they're giving some keys, right? Act of Algeciras is what France is using. Moors have to study Act of Algeciras. Especially Chapters 5 and 6 that talks about jurisdiction. Talks about fraud, smuggling, etc. So 5 and 6, Chapters 5 and 6, we must study that, okay? But France, understand, France is putting it on the record. And, so the Act of Algeciras drew conclusions therefrom as to the rights of the United States. The construction of a convention to which states, which states, which states, capital S. Moors must have states to even go to the ICJ, because ICJ is referring to them as states, not individuals. Okay? "Other than those concerned in the case were parties." So states are parties according to the ICJ and international law. That's why we've been studying for the first 15 classes about states and parties. The parties must be known, and the ICJ, international law, looks at you as a state. Regardless of the name of your state, you are classified as state. And if you don't have a state, then you are not a party to any country. So the parties being thus in question. "Such states were notified in accordance with Article 63, Paragraph 1 of the Statute." So as soon as you see them say the word "statue," whatever you're referring to. United Nations Charter. Moors must study the United Nations Charter. We're going back to the notes now. So in your notes, you should already have UN Charter, etc. And in your notes, you should have all these things already. If in fact, you read the first, if you went back to Class Number 15, you'll see these things already. But we're being redone. So the statute, as soon as they statute, you know that's UN, okay? "For this purpose, notes were addressed on April 6th, 1951, to the governments of Belgium, Spain, Italy, Netherlands, Portugal, and the United Kingdom of Great Britain, and Northern Ireland, Sweden." Why did they bring all these parties to the table? Because they mentioned what? Act of Algeciras was a multilateral treaty. So in a multilateral treaty, you have every right to notify all the other parties who have an interest in said treaty. So Moors, through Consular Court, if we ever have to go to the ICJ to deal with the United States of America corporation pretending to be a government, public government, then we can always petition these other countries as it relates to those treaties. Okay, let's continue. Okay, mother.
On June 21st, 1951, within the time limit fixed for the deposit of its countermemorial, the government of the United States of... ...of America. ...of America filed a document entitled Preliminary Objection. The proceedings on the merits were thereby suspended. The preliminary objection was communicated to the states entitled to appear before the court, as well as to the states which had been notified of the deposit of the application pursuant to Article 63 of the Statute. The proceedings thus instituted by the preliminary objection were terminated following a declaration by the government of the United States that it was prepared to withdraw its objection having regard to the explanations and clarifications given on behalf of the French government. And following a declaration by the French government that it did not oppose the withdrawal, in order of October 31st, 1951, placed on record, the discontinuance recorded that the proceedings on the merits were resumed and fixed. New time limits for the filing of the countermemorial, reply, and rejoinder.
Alright, thank you, mother. Let's go back and quickly assess. So what happened? "America filed a document entitled Preliminary Objection." Stop. Here's what the Moors must understand when you're dealing with the United States of America, or there are several state jurisdiction corporations. All they want to do is object to everything that anybody says to them, much less Moors, any nation around the world. The United States of America always does what's called stall, deny, and defend. The United States of America has mastered what's called stall, deny, and defend. It's not about whether they're right or wrong. They like to push things out while they now start working on what is going to be their true defense. Okay? So what happened here? The United States of America initially put together Preliminary Objection. They said, "Objection, we need more time to work on this to determine exactly what's happening." What do they do? First, they want to see what you're going to put on the record. Listen to me. The United States of America and several states always want to see what you're going to put on the record first. Then they try to now have time to speak to that dispute. How can they find a way to stall, deny, and defend? And after that, just absolutely reject to what you're saying, even though you may be right. So they always object first, or just simply ignore it, and say you're patently frivolous. That everything you're saying is arbitrary and capricious, and the reality is, they've just reversed it on you. They're the ones who are what you call patently frivolous, because they're municipal corporations, not a republic. They're the ones who have a position of what's called arbitrary and capricious. What does arbitrary and capricious mean? It means that you're now making a claim to a power that you don't have by right. So municipal corporations is making a claim under arbitrary and capricious, which is a legal term, saying they have some type of sovereign power that doesn't. Corporations don't have power over sovereign people. So everything they're saying is patently frivolous, but they've switched it on us and say what we're saying is patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. The United States of America is over here just standing, they're going to stall, deny, and defend, and object by keeping those principles. They've learned how to do that. But what happened? "The proceedings on the merits were thereby suspended." So what happened? France's position was suspended momentarily. "The preliminary objection was communicated to the states entitled to appear before the court, as well as to the states which had been notified of the deposit of the application pursuant to Article 63 of the Statute." So then you've got to go back, read the Statute on Article 3, United Nations Charter. We won't do that. People've got to go home, do some homework. "The proceedings thus instituted by the preliminary objections were terminated following a declaration by the government of the United States that it was prepared to withdraw its objection." What happened? They realized, okay, what France is saying is right. They're also saying, they're looking at all these, those states that we mentioned before. They're looking at, why all these states got to come to the table and deal with this issue that France has put on the table? I thought this is the United States and France. Why are they bringing all these people to the table? Ah, because France wanted witnesses. In any courts, you must have witnesses. That always helps your side of the equation under what's called incopatory evidence. Under your discovery, you've got witnesses that you subpoena witnesses. And that's what France did. They were subpoenaing, trying to set up subpoena to witnesses, i.e. other nations who were part of that multilateral treaty that's called Act of Algeciras 1906, okay? Okay. "So the proceedings thus instituted by the preliminary objections were terminated following a declaration by the government of the United States that it was prepared to withdraw its objection having regard to the explanations and clarifications given on both the French government and the following. A declaration by the French government that it did not oppose the withdrawal." So what happened? The United States of America had withdrew. Then they came back to the table, and France allowed them to come back to be a party to the dispute, okay? That's why they mentioned this word "rejoinder." We'll talk about that in a minute. Okay. "In order of October 31st, 1951, placed on the record, the discontinuance recorded that the proceedings of the merits were resumed and fixed new time limits for the filing of the countermemorial, reply, and rejoinder." So first things first, what is a rejoinder? Rejoiner is when you bring two parties together, but those parties must be a part of the same jurisdiction. You cannot bring two parties together who have two separate jurisdictions. When you bring two parties together, either they're both a part of the same jurisdiction, or they both agree to a jurisdiction that one of them will choose, or they both go to a referee, which is the ICJ in the hay, and say, "Okay, we're going to let the ICJ have the jurisdiction over these two parties."
So the rejoinder is where they rejoin, rejoin back to the treaty after they had objected, after they let their objection go.
Well, more specifically, back to allowing the ICJ to have the jurisdiction to both be parties on the record.
Okay.
So they rejoined, because the United States had walked away. And then they came back, and France let them come back to the table.
Right.
Rejoin, alright.
"The countermemorial and reply were filed within the time limits thus fixed. As regard the rejoinder, the time limit was extended at the request of the government of the United States from April 11th to April 18th, 1952. By order of March 31st, 1952, on April 18th, 1952, the rejoinder was filed and the case was ready for hearing. Public hearings were held on July 15th, 16th, 17th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 26th, 1952, during which the court heard MM and Andre Gross and Paul Ruder on behalf of the French government, and Mr. Adrian Fisher and Mr. Joseph Sweeney on behalf of the government of the United States. At the conclusion of the argument before the court..."
At the conclusion of the argument before the court, the submissions of the party were presented as follows.
Okay, all right. So so far, this is self-explanatory, not just laying out the dates that they now, once they rejoined and came back together, now these are the dates where they, both parties are now putting their dispute on the record and now they're having their, their arguments, so to speak, about, about the treaties and which side should be represented in terms of who's enforcing the proper understanding, the proper concepts of how to use a treaty, okay? So each side now is trying to put their story on the record that supports each one of their arguments, all right? Okay.
On behalf of the French government, may it please the court.
Just a moment.
Oh.
So let's underscore this. Now, this is France getting ready now, this is the, keep in mind, it's the judgment, it's a summary of what France was saying. So this is a quote-unquote of what France had put on the record based upon what they were saying to the court based upon their dispute behalf of the United States, okay? Okay, mother.
On behalf of the French government, may it please the court to adjudge and declare that the privileges of the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are only those which result from the text of Articles twenty and twenty-one of the Treaty of September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six and that since the most favored nation clause contained in Article twenty-four of the said treaty can no longer be invoked by the United States in the present state of the international obligations of the Sharifian Empire, there is nothing to justify the granting to the nationals of the United States and of preferential treatment which would be contrary to the provisions of the treaties.
Thank you. All right. Woo!
That's a lot.
You gotta really take a moment and understand how France opened up. We're gonna break this down. This is very important for all Moors to comprehend what I'm about to say. So we have to listen, listen, listen. Wait, mother.
Before you get started, which treaty was in eighteen thirty-six?
That's your Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Eighteen thirty-six, which is an extension of the seventeen eighty-seven treaty. That's your Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen.
Seventeen eighty-six, oh, right?
Yes, eighteen eighty-six. It was renewed in eighteen thirty-six. Uh-huh, so every fifty years, remember? Okay, you ready?
Yep, I'm ready. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, you're, you're good. That's a good question, all right. So here we go. So Moors must start to understand, what is it that I'm getting ready to explain to you? I need Moors to understand, when you're using your counsel court, what you're gonna try to do is get into the mindset of France versus the United States. You wanna get into mindset, how is France using their counterintelligence against the United States of America? It's a chess game of counterintelligence, chess game. France opens up by challenging jurisdiction immediately. Immediately. We're gonna learn that. Watch this. On behalf of the French government, may it please the court to, to adjudge and declare immediately come out, what does judge mean? They want the court just to understand that, well, we're standing on these principles and we want you to now give us a judgment that what we're putting on the record is the truth and the fact and nothing but the truth, okay? And declare, they want the, they're talking really, really, really as if they're like, okay, we want the court to truly understand what we're saying. We want you to declare based upon our dispute, the United States of America. So they're, they're now pulling I C J into their side of it. They're using counterintelligence even with the I C J saying, trust what we're saying. Give us the right adjudication on this, right? Okay, watch this. That the privilege of the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are only those which result from the text of Articles twenty and twenty-one of the, of the Treaty of September sixteen eighteen thirty-six, stop. Look what France just did. France is disclosing so-called Masonic secrets, Illuminati secrets. Watch this. France says that the United States of America has a privilege in Morocco to be in the land of Morocco. Why is France saying that the United States of America is privileged? Has, has a privilege of its nationals, the United States of America in Morocco? Look what they said, in Morocco. Because you gotta understand, when you read the Treaty of eighteen thirty-six, Article twenty-five, says it's a fifty-year term. A term means it expires. You're there temporarily, so therefore that's a term. What else is a term? The fact that the colonists are not sovereigns to the land. That Sidi Mohamed gave them the privilege of limited sovereign capacity just so they can carve out their thirteen colonies and be in a cohabitating treaty with the landlords, with the true sovereigns of the land, with the autarchist Aboriginal people of the land, with the indigenous people of the land. So the colonists, i.e. who are chiefly British, are living amongst Aboriginal people, so they are privileged. You're not gonna get your, your child a phone? And never mind, they think they're on the phone? The reality is a privilege that you can take away anytime you want. This is how France is opening up, letting the United States of America and the I C J know the United States of America is privileged to stay in Morocco only by one document. And what document is that? The Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Then they point out Articles twenty and twenty-one. Listen, Moors. Why do they point out Article twenty and twenty-one? Let's go to the treaty. Treaty of Peace and Friendship, okay? Eighteen thirty-six. We'll go down to Articles twenty and twenty-one. Why is France pointing out twenty and twenty-one? Moors love Articles twenty and twenty-one. They have the right concept. How can they enforce it, though, if they're stateless people? They can't. Only Moors national with state can enforce Articles twenty and twenty-one. Watch this. So Article twenty, why is France pointing it out? Because any of the citizens of the United States or any person under their protection should have any dispute with each other. The consul shall decide between the parties. And whenever the consul shall require any aid or assistance from our government to enforce its decisions, it should be immediately granted to you, to him. Remember what I told you? France was the original consul back in seventeen seventy-eight. All the way up to seventeen ninety-eight, they were the original consul on behalf of the United States of America and Moors here in Morocco, because Sidi Mohamed petitioned for France to be the referee on behalf of Moors, the United States of America, and on behalf of the United States of America colonists when they were dealing with Great Britain. So France is saying, we were the original consul. What else is France saying? France is saying that because they signed a treaty in nineteen twelve, a Treaty of Fairs, that's why you go back and write it down in your notes. Treaty of Fairs, Article six says that not only does France have power over protecting Moors subjects and Moors proteges, but also because of the Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve, the Sultan gave France similar to what's called power of attorney to oversee all treaties of the Moroccan Empire. So France opens up. First thing they do is point out Articles twenty and twenty-one. What are they doing? They're challenging jurisdiction of the United States of America, saying. France is saying, oh, the United States, we being France have jurisdiction over all the Moroccan treaties. And that the United States of America is subordinated to the treaties because they're, they're not the sovereigns, A. And B, they have a fifty-year lease agreement. And that lease agreement, at any time, there could be a petition and intent put on the record to abandon said treaty, if in fact the United States of America hasn't been renewing those treaties. If they left it up to just, between two parties, it's just being renewed on its own. That puts the United States of America in what's called a disadvantaged situation. France is taking advantage of that. Keep in mind, France has always been trying to undermine the colonists. The United States of America knows that France is trying to challenge jurisdiction, everything's about jurisdiction. So France goes right in Article twenty and Article twenty-one. Let's read Article twenty-one, then I'll make sense of this for you. So Article twenty-one talks about who? Moors. If a citizen of the United States should kill or wound a Moor, or the, on the contrary, if a Moor shall kill or wound a citizen of the United States, the law of the country shall take place and equal justice shall be rendered. The consul assisting at the trial, and if any deluded shall make his escape, the consul shall not be answerable for him in any manner whatsoever. What's happened? France is there talking about Moors and talking about the jurisdiction that France has what's called French protectorate. Go back and look at the French protectorate videos I've done. But you also must understand, because of Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve, the Sultan's gave France dominion like a power attorney over the entire Moors empire that they now refer to as the Sharifian Empire, right? We keep hearing about the Sharifian Empire, right? We're gonna look up the definition of that shortly. Let's stick right here for right now. So let's get back. So now we have a little bit more understanding. That the privileges of the nationals of the United States of America, notice France don't call them the United States. France calls them the United States of America. In Morocco are only those which result from the text of Articles twenty and twenty-one. See, France is letting Moors know when Moors start using counsel court, we use Articles twenty and twenty-one constantly, redundantly. Because France is giving us the answers to the test on how you deal with this in the I C J or how you deal with it in counsel court through your state when you're dealing with diversity of state versus that municipal corporation is giving you disputes.
As America was the first constitution, was the first treaty party with the United States of America when this peace and friendship treaty was created, those were the two parties.
Correct. So we're talking bilateral treaty. France is talking about a bilateral treaty that's between Moors and the citizens of the United States of America. And France is saying, because of the nineteen twelve treaty with the Sultan, Sultan gave them power attorney privileges, power to oversee that bilateral treaty. So right there, they're telling the United States of America, look, you only have jurisdiction over Articles twenty and twenty-one. And guess what, the United States, you've been usurping those Moors. See, France is challenging them on the fact that the other party to the treaty is not here. Where's the other party to that bilateral treaty? Listen to me. France is trying to say, where are the Moors? Because, yeah, I got the United States of America in here and I'm pointing out a treaty, and who's the other party to that treaty? Moors, where are they? Listen to me, Moors. France is putting on the record immediately, they're pointing out the word what? Article twenty-one. Where are the Moors? See what France is doing? Telling the I C J, there's a party missing from this equation. Where are they? And the United States of America don't have jurisdiction over Moors. They're your Moors. But the United States of America has jurisdiction over Black Moors. That's the truth. We're talking status. So you gotta understand what's really going on right here. What France is doing is they opened up, listen to me. France is how, opening up, challenging the United States of America, saying they got a privilege. So if they got the privilege, then who has a de jure, a lodi- a lodi-um status if it's not the United States of America? It's the Moors. That's why France opens up Articles twenty and twenty-one, because it's talking about Moors. France is trying to let the I C J know, where's the other party to this contract? Because it's a bilateral contract that France is talking about. France is not a party to the bilateral contract, but they have a power of attorney over it, and that power attorney is saying, where's the other party? Hmm. Where's the Moors? Article twenty-one. I'm trying to underscore this for you, like how France is coming at them. Why am I saying this? Because when Moors start to now challenge through counsel court, you must understand that I C J is very familiar with understanding Articles twenty and twenty-one, that Moors have the sovereign right because they are the other party in the contract. Let's continue. And that since the most favored nation clause contained in Article twenty-four of the said treaty can no longer be invoked by the United States. So now you see France, France now is using the word United States. Why? Because it's used interchangeably. The United States of America is doing business as the United States. You refer to them as both as long as your common sense to understand the difference between the two. Invoked by the United States in the present state of the international obligations of the Sharifian Empire. Look what France just did. What is the Sharifian Empire? Why, why is France, wait, I thought it was Morocco? They're talking the Moors, start. So what does Sharifian Empire mean? What is France talking about? Let's look up a definition of Sharifian Empire. So you can go online, you can look up Sharifian Empire on Google, you'll see several different definitions of the word. So I just tried to just do a quick copy paste of a few definitions. But let's just get into the basics of the definition. So Sharifian, here is an adjective. It describes a government. So what is it? According to definitions, Sharifian means Islam, another word for Sharifian. So they spell it different ways. But we're gonna stick to the strict sense, which is S.H.E.R.E.E.F.I.A.N. Why is that? Because that's what you find in the Acta Algeciras nineteen oh six. That's why France is bringing it up. All right, so you stick to the strict sense of how it's spelled. Sharifian means government and politics, diplomacy. It means military. Sharifian means, in British English, pertaining to the descendant of Muhammad through his daughter, Fatima. Number two, relates to those in Islamic countries who have noble ancestry or have political prominence. So Sharifian is your states. That's the Sharifian authority, the states. So it's relating to a group of twentieth-century dominant military officers who supported the Arab revolt, the Sharifian army, pertaining to the rulers of Morocco. So your Sharifian authority is your government. These are your officials. As we've been learning about how they put together a state, where you need elected officials. So the Sharifian authority are your elected officials of your state, okay? Keep in mind, we're talking empire. Empire is vast as a Moroccan east, east state, okay? So let's go back over here. Now that we have a basic understanding of what Sharifian Empire means, it means the sovereign authority of the elected officials who are running government, okay? So what happens? There is nothing to justify the granting to the nationals of the United States of preferential treatment which would be contrary to the provisions of the treaties. So what is France saying immediately? They're saying anything the United States of America says is patently frivolous, arbitrary, and capricious. Why? They tell you in the beginning, because France knows that the United States of America is, has a privilege. So they're privileged to who's the lodi- that should be here based upon this same treaty? That's the Moors. All right, so where's the other party? Moors, okay? So let's continue on. So we really must get an understanding, France is coming at them challenging jurisdiction and status. This is what we, we've been learning all these classes. Status, jurisdiction, based upon the parties. The parties must be known. And France is trying to say, say on the sneak tip, where are the Moors? Nobody wanna talk about the Moors? Okay, we'll continue, but they point this out immediately. They point out the fact that the United States has a privilege, because they're on a fifty-year term and they're not the sovereigns. All right, let's continue. From that. Or this that. All right.
That the government of the United States of America is not entitled to the claim that the application of all laws and regulations to its nationals in Morocco requires its express consent.
Continue.
That the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are subject to the laws and regulations enforced in the Sharifian Empire, and in particular, the regulation of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight on imports not involving an allocation of currency without the prior consent of on imports not involving an allocation of currency without the prior consent of the United States government.
All right. So let's go back and cover him. What is France saying? Remember, remember now, this is a counterintelligence. They're using treaties to their advantage. Okay? What is France saying? That the government of the United States of America, not be confused, the United States, is not entitled to claim that the application of all laws and regulations of its nationals in Morocco requires its express consent. So France is now putting on the record, France didn't have to get the United States of America's permission to do anything in the land of Morocco. Why? Because they're using the Treaty of nineteen twelve, Treaty of Fès. They gave them power of attorney over the Empire of Morocco. So they need to ask the United States permission. Why are they saying that? Because they told you in the beginning, the United States of America got a privileged status. You don't need no consent from the United States of America. Let me give you an example. Let's say your landlord wants to come in and change the filter in your furnace. He sends you a petition letting you know, hey, I'll be there three days from now at twelve noon, between twelve and two. You don't have a right as a tenant to say, nah, you gotta get my permission to come up and here. So your landlord's gonna show up on that day, that time, and enter into the property, no matter what, no matter what, because they don't need the consent of the tenant. They just gotta notify. So right here, France is disclosing, Moors don't have to get the permission of the United States of America to do anything in their own homeland. That's the way we gotta start understanding this from a counsel court, from a Moors state perspective, because that's what France is saying on the record. So if France is not even a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, imagine how powerful Moors are gonna be when they say this to the United States of America, we don't need your consent. We just give you notice, and after that, we move forward whatever said application is that we're going to do. If you go back and read the Rights of Indigenous People, it clearly states, and even in the Rights of Indigenous People, it came out of two thousand seven from the United Nations, signed into the United States of America law in the year twenty-ten by Barack H. Obama, says that the United States of America has to now petition anything they're doing up in the indigenous people land, they gotta get the indigenous people to be a part of that. That's the same thing France is saying here in nineteen fifty-two. Nobody's more powerful than the human being that's a party of the contract.
Right.
Your attorney never has the same, your attorney has a privileged status. You have the original lodi- status. So France right here, don't get me wrong, France is looking out for their best interest in this challenge because they're now, you're gonna learn later on, France is now getting consumption taxes from the United States of America. Okay? The United States of America don't wanna pay the taxes. Because they don't like nobody telling them what to do. They don't like to pay nobody, want everybody to pay them. Right? So France is saying, no, 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 you owe us. And the United States, the United States is saying, you have to get our permission to charge us. France is saying, no, I don't. Go back and look at the treaty. What does Article twenty say? That the consul shall make the decision. Listen. Article twenty. Who's gonna enforce his decision? It shall be immediately granted to him. Who's to him? The consul. Consul shall require any aid. Consul always gets to find a decision. France was the protector at this time. France is saying, I'm the consul. I get to make the decisions. The United States don't have no say in this. Why? Because the United States got a privileged status. I think what we're gonna find out later down the road, that the United States of America hasn't been renewing these contracts of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship for fifty years at a time, we might find that out. Or we might find out that they have been renewing it. Either way, in nineteen fifty-two, France is saying, hmm, you guys got a privileged status. Go ahead, mother.
But how can they re- renew a contract if the other party's not there to agree to that contract?
Exactly. That's why France opened up to say, uh, Article twenty and twenty-one, where's the Moors? One of the parties is not here to represent this bilateral treaty. You gotta understand what's going on. France has never liked the colors. I'm not trying to say they're all happy about Moors, but they, the Moors in France have always been allies. France opens up immediately talking about Moors again. Wait a minute. What's that all about? Remember the French Protectorate in the year nineteen twelve? When France and Morocco came together to sign the Treaty of nineteen twelve? They put together, this is what you call an insignia. This is a merchant insignia when France and Morocco came together in the year nineteen twelve. When they signed the Treaty of Fès. That's the protectorate. Well, I don't have the Treaty of Fès up right now. That's their insignia. What happened? Immediately after they signed the Treaty of Fès nineteen twelve, France comes over in nineteen thirteen, same year Nogentouali came out. Where's, they come, this is about Morocco. Wait a minute. French protectorate in Morocco, relinquishment of extraterritorial jurisdiction by certain foreign powers. Who's the certain foreign powers? The United States of America. The attitude of the United States. What's happening here? France then came over to the United States to tell them, uh, yeah, we just signed a treaty with the Sultan, and the Sultan just told us, the French government, we have power of attorney over the Moors and the Empire of Morocco. So the United States, listen up, we want the Moors to be free immediately. You give up extraterritorial jurisdiction. What does extraterritorial mean? You must understand. The United States of America's citizens do have territorial jurisdiction, but only over their own citizens. Not the land, their citizens. So when you see the word extra, that means now, they are now encroached over into someone else's state rights. They're now encroached over to someone else's diversity of citizenship. They've been encroached over to someone's diversity of national statehood. They're making a false claim in someone else's jurisdiction. That's why it's called extraterritorial, because they're claiming some extra land or extra privilege that they don't have. France is challenging them on this. So if France is challenging them on nineteen thirteen about who? Watch this. Okay, here we go. All right. So what is France challenging? First thing France talks about when they come over in nineteen thirteen is what? This all gonna make sense to you. When you go to the same document, the protectorate document, I've done a video about this, go back and watch French Protectorate. What does France come over and says, turning first? Most monks can read that, turning first.
Turning first to the subject of the revision of the protege's list mentioned in Mr. Per- Tedi's note of September fourteenth is proper to state. That the protection of native Moors in Morocco by this government rests upon its treaty with Morocco of eighteen thirty-six and the Madrid Convention of eighteen eighty.
Stop. So first thing first, France come over in nineteen thirteen, they wanna talk about who? Native Moors in Morocco. So nineteen thirteen, France is challenging the United States of America about these Moors. So, okay. So we go back now to France versus the United States of America. We scroll back up, we come back down over there again. What's the first thing that France opens up with again, all over again? That the privilege of the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, only those which result from the text of Articles twenty and twenty-one of the Treaty of September sixteenth eighteen thirty-six. They're back at it again, challenging what? Jurisdiction. And they open up again talking about who? Moors, twenty-one. And Article twenty, because it's a bilateral travel treaty amongst citizens of the United States of America, republic, and Moors. That's how they open up again. So they continue the same conversation from nineteen thirteen, they're now talking about in nineteen fifty-two. Because of what happened with the Treaty of Fès of nineteen twelve. Okay? So now France is challenging them on jurisdiction again. Because the Moors are not present to make their claim and be a party. So when they say right here, that the government of the United States of America is not entitled to claim that the application of all laws and regulations to its nationals in Morocco.
It's Moors in Morocco.
So they're, to, to its nationals, no, so it's the nationals of the United States of America that the nationals of Morocco requires its express content, consent, meaning that France is saying, we don't have to get your agreement, the United States of America. Because Moors don't have to get your agreement, and we represent the Moors. And we represent the entire vast Empire of Morocco on behalf of Sultan. So the United States of America is in a subordinate position as tenants in our land. Okay? And that the consul shall make the final decision. That's why Article twenty is so important to understand. Moors always get the final say, no matter what. Because the consul gets to make the final decision. Okay? Let's continue. That the national, the United States of America in Morocco, notice they keep saying in Morocco, because the United States Corporation is in Morocco, and even when they were the republic, they were in Morocco. That must be understood. That the, that the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco are subject to the laws and regulations enforced in the Sharifian Empire. This is France is saying, the United States is bound to the treaties. Bound to the treaties and anything to the contrary, notwithstanding. And in particular, the regulation of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight. So what did they do? They just made a distinction. First, they started talking about the treaties, and now they just mentioned now, December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight, they had another agreement based upon economics, based upon taxation, etc. We'll talk about that. Okay? Imports not involving any, an allocation of currency without the prior consent of the United States of Government. So France now mentions another economic contract that a lot of nations have, the United States of America, on December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight. We'll get there. But what I want you to focus in on right now is what, what did France say? That the nationals of the United States of America in Morocco, we stand on Morocco, are subject to the laws and regulations enforced in the Sharifian Empire. They're talking about those treaties. It's enforced. And if the United States of America is bound to the treaty by law. And France is trying to enforce that law on behalf of their own needs, they needed from the United States of America to tax them, as well as on behalf of the Moors. You gotta remember, France is fighting a two-party, two-part fight here. They fight for themselves, but what they wanted out the deal, they're fighting for Moors too. Let's continue. Okay, mother.
That the decree of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight concerning the regulation of imports not involving an allocation of currency is in conformity with the economic system which is applicable to Morocco according to the conventions which bind France and the United States.
Stop. So now they keep talking about this economic contract that they have, that's more of a, it's a multilateral contract, okay, for trade. They're talking about a trade contract. But France started opening up, talking about the Act of Algiers and the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six. Now they're bringing to the table another economic contract of nineteen forty-eight. So now they're talking about three different, what they call discovery documents that they're using as their exhibits, okay, to defend themselves. Let's continue.
That Article ninety-five of the Act of Algiers defines value for customs purposes as the value of the merchandise at the time and at the place where it is presented for customs clearance. That no treaty has conferred on the United States' physical immunity for its nationals in Morocco.
That's fiscal, fiscal.
Fiscal immunity for its nationals in Morocco, either directly or through the effect of the most favored nation clause.
Stop. So why is this important that we're reading this section? As Moors open up a counsel court. France right here now is doing a demonstration, talking about ports, they're talking about trade. How do you tax the United States of America for imports and exports? Because they're taking products in and out of Morocco, not the United States. The United States of America is doing business in Morocco, no different than Walmart, no different than Amazon. So how do we tax the colonists for doing business at Morocco? So you gotta understand, France is taxing the United States of America. So Moors gotta look at this from a perspective, how is France using counterintelligence to deal with the United States of America from a taxation perspective? They're using certain treaties to enforce taxation. So therefore, when constant, when you start using counsel court, Moors will start using what's called consumption taxes, because the colonists are doing business in our land, and they owe rent. Okay, so that's what France is talking about now, that the Article ninety-five, the Act of Algiers, Act of, uh, Act of Algiers is talking about really defining taxation on imports and exports. Okay?
Now I have a question. How can France, um, ask for taxes on a land, um, that they don't own anything on? Wouldn't that just be between the two parties, Morocco and the United States?
That's a really good question. Keep in mind, they act as, as power attorney. Some Moors are in a coma. The power attorney is now collecting on things that the, on lodi- Moors ordinarily should have been collecting. So France has stepped in to collect taxes for their own need in lieu of the Moors doing it. Since Moors ain't collecting taxes, France is collecting taxes because France was given the sovereign power to oversee contracts, and now they're taking the money, since the Moors aren't doing it. So that's an excellent question. They're not really supposed to be taxing the United States of America. It should be Moors. But Moors aren't doing it, so France is doing it. All right?
So they're collecting money on behalf of the Moors.
Not on behalf of. It's because they have a power of attorney status to do it. But it's not like they're putting it in a Moors bank account.
Right, right.
Okay, so let's just get that understood. Okay, they're taking it back to their French Republic. I'm not trying to say if that's a good or a bad thing, because it's the obligation of Moors to collect taxes. We just haven't been doing it.
Well, just like having your own attorney. I mean, you still gotta pay them.
Still gotta pay them.
Right.
See? All right. Let's continue.
Okay, um, custom clearance, that no treaty has conferred on the United States' physical immunity for its national in Morocco, either directly or through the effect of the most favored nation clause. That the laws and regulations on a fiscal, fiscal matters which have been put into force in the Sharifian Empire are applicable to the nationals of the United States without the prior consent of the government of the United States.
Stop. So France, once again, they're making a power grab. Moors aren't doing it, so France is doing it. Right? Because the Sharifian Empire can tax anyone that's in their lands, just like anybody who's on your land or your roommate, etc. You can tax them, i.e. get them to pay rent, because they're residing on your land. So France is now giving us a demonstration, an exercise on how do you enforce taxation Act of Algiers and the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six, Articles twenty and twenty-one. Let's continue.
And consequently, consumption taxes provided by the, the air.
It's called, um, the her.
The her.
Like daughter, da her.
Da her. Taxes provided by the da her of February twenty-eighth nineteen forty-eight have been legally collected from the nationals of the United States and should not be refunded to them.
Stop. So what's happening? Now it's starting to come full circle. France is taxing the United States of America for imports and exports that they're bringing into Morocco. Because France is saying, I got power of attorney over the Moroccan Empire, so we want you to, we want you to pay for everything you're bringing in and take it out. Because the Moors are not asking for it, so France is asking for it. But this is an exercise on how Moors one day will start using counsel court to do, get what? Consumption taxes. This is an exercise. This is, this is playing out in ICJ now. Let's continue.
On behalf of the government of the United States.
Stop. So what's happening now? Now it's the United States' turn. This is everybody. Watch what the United States says. Pay close attention, they're talking government, they're talking jurisdiction, over who? Moors and Morocco, because their job is to defend their position to hold on to the extraterritorial jurisdiction that they have now extended over into the land of Morocco, instead of just only dealing with their thirteen colonies. And thirteen colonists, which is their citizens in the United States of America. They're now trying to control Moors, they're getting ready to expose it, France got them to expose it. Cause France opens up, talking about Article twenty and Article twenty-one, now the United States feels though they gotta now speak to that.
Right.
Watch this. Go ahead, Mo.
Number one, the submissions and conclusions presented by the French government in this case. Should be rejected on the ground that the French government has failed to maintain the burden of proof. Which is assumed as party plaintiff and by reason of the nature of the legal issues involved.
Stop, so this is the United States' favorite thing to do. They always say the party, other party can't have a claim, they're not a party to the contract. So watch this, the United States of America is open up by saying France is not a party to the contract. See, the United States is talking jurisdiction based upon party, the parties must be known. The United States is checking boxes, saying, is France really a party to the contract? You see how they're challenging them immediately? So let's read it. The submission and conclusions presented by the French government in this case should be rejected, they love to reject people. They don't even talk about the subject matter. Why? They gonna say, you're patently frivolous. And what you're saying is arbitrary and capricious. We won't even show up to court, cause you're not a party and we gotta pay you no attention. The United States love to have that position, it's called stalled, denied, defended. By not even acknowledging you, that's what they've been doing to Moors for decades. Not acknowledging Moors, they use this tactic on everybody, they say rejection, we ain't listening to you.
Cause you're not part of the party.
They're trying to say you're not a party, but the reality is, they're not a party. Cause they're a municipal corporation and not a republic. They always flipping on you. So France is not going for the okidome. Okay, keep in mind, this is what the United States is saying, France got them to start running their mouth. The submission and conclusions presented by the French government in this case should be rejected. On the ground, the French government has failed to maintain the burden of proof which it assumes as party. Painted, they saying they can't be a party, cause they can't, they can't be the plaintiff, cause they're not party to the bilateral treaty between Moors. And the citizens of the United States of America. See now all of a sudden, the United States of America getting brand new, now they want to top parties. Who's de jour? See, the Moors have been telling this whole time, we're parties, saying, no you're not. Now the United States of America is now telling somebody else they're not a party, they love to say that. Cause they wanna hold on to the extraterritorial jurisdiction possession of things, watch this. And by reason of the nature of the legal issue involved. So they wanna just have it all dismissed, cause they say France ain't a party, and guess what? France is really not a party to a bilateral treaty, but. Because of the Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve, they became a power of attorney. Which made them a party to oversee the Moors Empire.
Would they be a third party? Would they be called a third party?
They are a third party interloper.
Okay.
But they've been given permission by the Sultan. To be the consul on behalf of the Moors. But you must understand, France is making the claim as if they're the party. That's why they opened up, talking about Moors, where's the Moors? Oh, the Moors not here, okay. Then France is just gonna make the claim on their own. The United States of America is already making the claim, so now France, the United States is beefing over whose empire? Moors Empire. Cause Moors, through tacit acquiescence, haven't shown up. That's called you waived your rights. To be there as a party, Moors have waived their rights because they're neither black in color, or they're Ipsos Jew or Moors subjects. Or they're Moors proteges, or they're Black Moors, or they're sovereign citizens, they're not Moors nationals of a state. So they waived their rights to be at the ICJ.
We were pretty asleep.
So France, the United States of America are states on the record, so they get to go and make a claim over the Moors estate. Why am I mentioning this? Because now that Moors are waking up, creating these states, we can go make a claim.
Right.
Read these well set of principles of how France was coming after the United States of America in this counterintelligence chess game. If you read the definition of black and you read the definition of white in the American Standard Dictionary, it talks about chess. Cause chess is what you call a counterintelligence combatant game. Okay? Let's continue.
The treaty rights of the United States and Morocco forbid Morocco to impose prohibish. Prohibitions?
Prohibitions.
Pro, say that again?
Prohibitions.
Prohibitions on American imports save those specified by the treaties. And these rights are still in full force and effect.
So what is the United States of America saying? We can't be taxed according to the treaty, wait a minute, all of a sudden, the United States of America knows there's some treaties that, that exist? Moors have been telling for decades, treaty, 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 United States of America like, Moors are who, who, who you? Now all of a sudden, they're talking treaty, the treaty rights of the United States in Morocco, this is the United States of America saying this, listen. Even the United States said what? The treaty rights of the United States in Morocco. They just told you on the record, the United States know they're in Morocco. Only people don't know that this Morocco is people who think people are crayons. What the whole world knows, including the colonists, know they're in Morocco. George Washington talks about it all the time, that's why I go with these documents, so you start putting the other timelines and understanding, these people know damn well you're a Moor. They don't doubt it, they know it. Their job is to simply say rejection or objection. See the words they've already used early on, they said the word preliminary objection, then later on, you hear them say the word rejection. And next, soon as they open up, how did they open up? What was the first thing they opened up with number one? They just basically say that you're not a party. They've been telling Moors for decades, you're just not a party, we don't recognize you, this is the same playbook they use on everybody. That game is over, because now that we're creating a state. And we're gonna enforce constant court, we're gonna be in proper standing. So right here, let me read, the treaty rights of the United States in Morocco forbid Morocco to impose prohibitions. On American imports save those specified by the treaties. And these rights are still in force and effect, so the United States of America is saying the treaties are enforced. But wait a minute, when Moors trying to enforce a treaty, why they act like they don't know what the hell we're talking about? Two reasons. One, we don't have our political status together. So we were plaintiff in error, we were defendant in error. We didn't have our political status right, that's number one, so they said to us what? We can't be a party, cause we didn't have our status correct. Because of the Treaty of Vienna nineteen sixty-nine, say you must have a state. The United States of America been getting away with that same old play each and every time, you're not a party. Cause Moors fail to comprehend international law. What's the second reason why they say it? Is because they're criminals. They wanna hold on by what's called possession. Remember, France said in the beginning, the United States of America had a privileged status, what does privileged mean? You have possession, not ownership, what is possession involved? Possession is nine tenths of the law. Why is it one hundred percent? Because you must always leave an opportunity for the loadio. People to come back and make a proper claim under what's called ownership. Loadio means ownership. Colonists is the privileged status of possession, possession and loadio, two different things. So therefore, France opens up, telling the whole world, they're there on a privileged status and the Moors have the loadio, autognist. Indigenous Aboriginal status to come back and make a proper claim under Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. By their will, what's their will? Their consanguinity along with their political documents, they've checked these boxes. Now they're poised and have full power from constant court. And get those consumption taxes from people who are residing in Morocco. Because the United States of America themselves admitted the treaty rights of the United States in Morocco, this is the United States talking. The United States in Morocco, that's what they said. They know it.
Okay, oh, you're gonna make me go over.
Uh-huh.
The Daher of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight imposing a prohibition on imports. Is in direct contravention of the treaty rights of the United States. Forbidding prohibitions on American imports and the French government by applying. The Daher of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight to American nationals. Without the consent of the United States. From December thirty-first nineteen forty-eight to May eleventh nineteen forty-nine. Violated the treaty rights of the United States and was guilty of a breach of international law.
Stop, imagine that. The United States of America trying to tell France, man, you ain't following international law, you breaching treaties. Imagine that. You know what that's called? An oxymoron. Well, let's go back to the reading. The Daher or da her of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight, you gotta go back and do some research, figure out what is that all about? Moors need to understand what that's about, why? Because that's an economic trade relations they have based upon what's called taxes. Of imports and exports, so Moors will have to study these themes in the future to understand how do we tax what goes in and out of Morocco. We'll talk about that another day. Imposing a prohibition on imports is in direct contravention of the treaty rights of the United States forbidding prohibiting, stop. The United States keeps talking treaty. Once Moors fix their status. We can talk treaty, cause they talking treaty. Don't let the United States of America fool you, they know exactly who the Moors are. When they talking treaty. And the French government by applying the, the, the her of December thirty of nineteen forty-eight to American nationals without the consent of the United States. From December thirty-first nineteen forty-eight to May uh eleven nineteen forty-nine. Violate the treaty rights of the United States and was guilty of a breach of international law, okay, that's common sense, the United States of America is saying. We think what France did by charging us taxes was a breach of contract and a breach of international law. So now all of a sudden, the United States of America again, brand new, they wanna talk principles. France is saying, I'm talking principles too. Something's gonna come to a head, the ICJ is going to make a decision. To figure out what's happening with these consumption taxes by using what discovery documents? Act of Algiers nineteen oh six, Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, and now they're adding this Daher or da her of nineteen forty-eight. Which is, you're talking about economic trade, the taxation of imports and exports. Moors will start understanding these things. Okay, Mo, continue.
American nationals cannot legally be submitted to the Daher. Of December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight without the prior consent of the United States. Which operates to waive temporarily its treaty rights.
Wait a minute. American nationals cannot legally be submitted to the da, da her of December thirty of nineteen forty-eight. Without the prior consent of the United States which operates to waive temporarily its treaty rights. Wait, what is that again? See, the United States of America is using the treaty as their defense, is saying the treaty has their original jurisdiction. Over this December thirtieth nineteen forty-eight document. They're using the treaty as their own defense. Moors have been telling the United States of America, we using the treaty for defense, the United States of America like, huh? What are you talking about? We, treaty, what treaty? More, what kind of, what? And here it is, the United States of America is using the treaty. As a defense, they're saying that which operates to waive temporarily its treaty rights, the United States of America is saying. We're not waiving our treaty rights. Treaty is supreme law of the land regardless of what documents we have, why? The United States of America knows that anytime there's a dispute with a different application. If it's confusing, it's a gray area, what do you automatically resort back to? The treaty. Treaty is supreme law of the land, not your other type of contracts. Treaty, the United States of America pulls a Moorish move and says, treaty is supreme law of the land. Read Article six of the Constitution, treaty is supreme law of the land, what does the United States of America tell France and ICJ? Treaty is supreme law of the land regardless of what that nineteen forty-eight document said. And they're saying, hmm, we didn't waive our rights and we can always choose to temporarily waive our rights. They're understanding the power of treaties while Moors been trying to make a claim and they're blocking Moors. Why? Cause Moors. Are the richest people on planet Earth. Because you're in Morocco and Morocco is the holy grail of the world. Because the United States of America is claiming a false jurisdiction in Morocco, listen. Sidi Mohamed in the year seventeen eighty-six, when he signed a treaty with the United States of America. Which at that time was the Articles of Federation Continental Congress, i.e. Congress or chiefly British. What does Sidi wanna do? He wanted to bring the Christian powers and the Muslims together. And create unity. And over the last couple hundred years, Sidi Mohamed, who was a prophet. Recognize if he could bring the Europeans and Moors together, we could do some powerful things together. So the United States of America usurped the Moors and took over Sidi's vision. Of creating United Nations in North America, think about it. North America has more nationals on planet Earth than any other country or state on planet Earth. This is what they call, North America is full of nothing but nationals from around the world conducting commerce right here in North America. We are the hub and everybody else are spokes to North America, i.e. Northwest of Mexico. Do you know how much commerce comes into Northwest of Mexico annually? Imports as well as the commerce, exports. Cause everybody wants to come here. So Sidi Mohamed's vision came to fruition, it manifested, and guess who's taking in all the money for that? The United States of American colonists who were the tenants, tenants never make the profit. The landlord makes the profit, but they switched it. Now the colonists acting like the landlord, got the Moors acting like they're the janitor. But now slowly but surely. It's reversing. Moors gonna get that landlord status back because it's our sovereign right under posthumum per consanguine, as long as we follow international law. Keep in mind, today is class number sixteen, I'm past talking about, have you checked your boxes? These classes now about, you've checked these boxes, now go out and run your government. And this document right here, we're reading it through the ICJ, is telling you how to get your consumption taxes. Because everybody's on our land. Okay, we're gonna finish up uh this section and then we're going to start to plan on continuing this in another session. This is part two of probably a three or four part series.
Oh, okay.
What are we naming this? France versus the United States of America and understanding the ICJ's judgment. On how you deal with jurisdiction as Moors and we're starting to understand constant court, so I need all the Moors to understand out there. Once you put together your state government, you've got your matriarchal councils to, who is now the legislative branch. You got your judicial branch and your caisses, and you got your executive branch, now you're using the power. To now exercise, at least in this example, of an exercise, talking about consumption taxes, and you're gonna learn more as we continue to read, okay? So therefore, what we're gonna do is we're gonna keep reading this subsection right here about what the United States is saying, then we're going to close out. Let's continue. Yes, I do believe so.
The jurisdiction conferred upon the United States by the treaties of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six. Was jurisdiction civil and criminal in all cases arising between American citizens. In addition, the United States acquired in Morocco jurisdiction in all cases. In which an American citizen, our protege, was defended through the effect of the most favored nation clause. And through custom and usage. Such jurisdiction was not affected by the surrender by Great Britain in nineteen thirty-seven. Of its rights of jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco.
Stop, this is important to understand, Moors. The United States, France has got the United States to put on the record, because France opened up, challenging them on those treaties, bilateral treaties with Moors. The United, United States of America has no choice but to speak to it now, cause they gotta deal with that dispute. Where's, where's the United States of America come out and say, the jurisdiction conferred upon the United States by the treaties of seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six? Why the United States of America keep acting like they don't know what those treaties are?
What's it, which one? What's, what's?
Seventeen eighty-seven.
Is that the?
That's your first treaty, Treaty of Peace and Friendship.
Okay, got it.
Alright, okay. And eighteen thirty-six, okay, so let's go back to the beginning. So the jurisdiction conferred for the United States by the treaties of seventeen eighty-seven, Treaty of Peace and Friendship in eighteen thirty-six when it was renewed and they changed Article twenty-five. Was the jurisdiction, so the United States of America talking jurisdiction? They're claiming what? Civil and criminal jurisdiction in all cases arising between American citizens. Who do they consider American citizens? Oh, they're about to tell you. In addition. In addition. In addition, the United States acquired in Morocco jurisdiction in all cases in which an American citizen or protege, who's the proteges? Moors. Because now, the United States of America didn't wanna say the word Moore. They come out and say protege. Because they know that France was saying that in nineteen thirteen, referring to the Moors as proteges. Because the Moors came on their protector status. So protege is another word for Moors. So in addition, the United States acquired in Morocco jurisdiction, they say they acquired it. What does that mean? They never had it, they took it. They acquired in Morocco jurisdiction in all cases in which American citizens and Moors was defended through the effect of the most favored nation clause and through the custom and usage. See, they got the United States Americans start talking, talk about these Moors. That's why y'all gonna learn later on as we read, the ICJ gave the United States of America jurisdiction over Moors who are still in a protector status because Moors are still sovereign citizens, Ibsu-Jour Moors subjects and Moors proteges until they follow their instructions of international law. So where are they getting this from? They're getting this from what? Custom and usage, they saying they're just, the United States is accustomed and they're used to having Moors as their protected citizens. Because Moors ain't claiming to be Moore through a state. So under customs and usage, they're just saying their custom, just Moors being usurped. And they just gonna keep usurping on an extraterritorial jurisdiction. Such jurisdiction was not affected by the surrender by Great Britain in nineteen thirty-seven of its rights of jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco. So now Moors have to go back and do a little research and understand what was going on with Great Britain in nineteen thirty-seven. The British, once again, came back to the table signing treaties. The colonies were part of that as well because they are talking jurisdiction in this treaty. But you will find out later on that Great Britain remanded that treaty. They took away any type of capitulation, uh regime jurisdiction or any extraterritorial jurisdiction, Great Britain walked away from that status, okay? We'll learn about that another day, but you gotta understand, the ICJ, the United States of America and France is disclosing once again more documents that we must all study. Anytime something hits the table through the ICJ, we must study it. We must understand law and history, timelines. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna stop right there. I think the most important thing that Moors must take away from what we presented today is that A, we've narrowed this down to two classifications of Moors. Either you're Moorish national of your state, or you're a stateless Moor, which makes you a citizen of the United States. And now, we're no longer talking about, have you checked the boxes? We're gonna talk about now that you've checked these boxes. And once you've checked all these boxes, now you create the state, you immediately create constant court out of the judicial branch. You start to enact your powers through the judgment of your applications. Okay, so we'll keep talking about jurisdiction of constant courts, I've got some notes written down here, come on, judicial notice, judicial order, contempt of court, and then fines and penalties, we'll learn more about that as we read this document, alright? So what we'll do is we'll end it here, at the end right here where it says uh such jurisdiction was not affected by the surrender by the Great by Great Britain nineteen thirty-seven of its rights of jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco, alright? So we'll end it there, we'll pick up on class number seventeen, alright?
August fourth two thousand twenty-one.